Thank you. I'm going to open council time for Wednesday, February the 2nd, 2022. That's 2-2-22. Lots of twos today. Anyway, actually, I would like to move to amend the agenda to add one item to new business. That'd be 1.1, the reelection of council officers. Without objection, we will do that. Any objection? Okay. Okay, moving on then to all business minutes for the January 28th, 2026, 2022 meeting. And ask for a minute, a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the last meeting. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item 1.2 under council, under all business council meetings. And I believe this is to address whether we are going to continue meeting virtually or whether we'll go to in person. Is that correct, County Manager?
Yes, that is correct. The council did discuss this, I think, about three weeks ago and wanted to have a briefing at the Board of Health with our local medical partners before making any decision moving forward, whether or not to open our council meetings to the in-person in the public. I can just share a brief update from Dr. Melnick. This was from yesterday that I spoke with him, just reiterating that the rates are still high in Clark County. Nationally as a whole, they are seeing trends where case numbers as well as hospitalizations are beginning to go down. However, the death rate is still increasing. Clark County may be at a peak now, but we are still reviewing the data. So we haven't quite seen that downward trend yet. Local hospitals are still close to capacity. And our death rate in Clark County was the highest since the pandemic this last week. And then also, just as a reminder, we still are under restrictions with regard to the governor's proclamation regarding masking indoors and the number of people. So if the council were to choose to open in the public, we would only be allowed to permit about 30 community members into the hearing room and all of them would have to maintain masks, wearing masks and social distancing.
Madam Chair, may I?
Councilor Medjig.
So I think that kind of summarized briefing is just what we need. And I propose that we get another one in about two weeks or at another appropriate meeting. I think it's too soon to be opening it up. And again, it's just so problematic. As long as the governor's restrictions remain in place, the ability to enforce at public meetings will be almost impossible.
Other comments?
Chair.
Councilor Olson.
Yeah, I agree with Councilor Medjig at this point. I think whether it's two weeks or three weeks, whether we redress this again, I think we're, I don't think anything really significantly has changed significantly since our last conversation. Certainly no guidance has changed. And we still see a lot of pressure with this Omicron variant in the future. So I think we look to two or three weeks from now to redress this again.
I agree with that.
Okay, does this need to be a motion for? I'm assuming it does. It probably does, correct? Kathleen?
Just to be clear for the record, I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Okay. Somebody like to make that motion? Was that your motion, Councilor Medjig?
All right, I got distracted a second. I just heard my name. What was the question?
Was that a motion?
Oh, yes, I would make the motion that where we're at and basically these cycles. I think probably just three weeks would be an appropriate timeframe. If Dr. Melnick sees a huge change, sea change here locally, then we can always take it up or try to take it up earlier.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to revisit this, remain in virtual form for at least another three weeks or until we get some other notice from our health director. Is there further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes. Okay, moving to new business. Now, I asked for this to be placed on the agenda today. And I just want to say I have an announcement because of a number of circumstances. This announcement comes earlier than I had planned. I'm announcing that I will be retiring from the Clark County Council in the next several weeks. My expectation is that March 1st will be my last day. I will be transmitting an official letter of resignation to the county manager at the appropriate time. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the people who elected me to this position nearly six years ago. This exit is not a spontaneous act. Rather, it's been in the planning for nearly two years. I determined that I would not be running for reelection and would be moving out of state with my husband to enjoy our grandchildren. As I mentioned, it happens that circumstances have expedited that timeline. With that, I want to make sure that I leave in an orderly fashion. And the charter states that the vice chair will take the place of the chair when she is absent. However, it does not state that that will be a permanent assignment or through the end of the term of the chair if they vacate the position. Therefore, I would like to nominate Karen Bowerman as chair to take my place now and for the remainder of my term after my departure. I nominate and move that Karen Bowerman replaces me as chair again now and for the remainder of the term, which ends in December of 2022.
Madam Chair, can we get a point of order here? I just would like to get a process check. And thank you for your announcement. Leslie's on the line. I just want to get a process check here on making sure that we're, this is an appropriate process and how we should be going about this rearrangement of officers, given pretty spur of the moment here. So if I could just get some feedback from legal on whether we're doing this correctly or if there's a different way to do it.
All right. Thank you. Yes, I'm here, Leslie. Thank you, Chair O'Brien and Counselor Olson. So if we look at the charter, the charter talks about Section 2.2, about how the council shall at their first regular council meeting elect one of its members to be chair. And so that occurred this year. And Section 2.2 subsection 3 states that the council shall annually elect one of its members as vice chair who shall act in the absence of the chair. The charter doesn't talk about what happens if the chair position vacates before the end of the year. However, in the rules of procedure, which is under Section 3D, it states if a vacancy occurs in the office of the council chair or council vice chair, the remaining counselors will elect one of their own to serve until the next annual election of the council chair and council vice chair at the first council meeting of the following year. So the way I read that is that if Chair Quiring O'Brien is retiring, but isn't leaving until March 1st, in order to elect a new council chair, it would mean that Chair O'Brien would be stepping down as chair in the interim between now and March 1st. And then therefore, the council could vote for a new chair. And if needed, a new vice chair, then that those individuals would remain in those positions until the first meeting of 2023 pursuant to the charter. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. So then for clarification, then the chair is stepping down today as chair. And the council then will reelect a new chair? Is that the process specifically?
Yes, assuming that that's what's happening today, that is the process that would take place.
And if I could, Madam Chair, another way to look at this, I mean, the charter just changed. We just literally had a vote a couple of weeks ago. Another way to look at this is that because of this announcement, we were just reconsidering the vote we took just a couple of weeks ago to elect a new chair and a new vice chair. So I think we should move forward. If we need a vote on the process, we can take that today.
Yeah, so I did make that motion. I do intend on stepping down as chair. And I thought I made it clear, but clarify that it would be now, from now until March 1st that I will serve as a counselor in District 5.
I will second the motion to nominate Karen Bowerman, assuming that she'll, I assume when she accepted the vice chair position, that she was willing to accept the chair position. Should circumstances cause that to occur? And it looks like those circumstances are occurring. So I would second the motion for Karen.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. The motion passes. We're going to hand the gavel over to the new chair, Sir Bowerman, and...
I think that's a mighty big gavel you carry there. I don't see one. I must say that I'd like to take just a moment of personal privilege. I am amazed, shocked, and I'd like to say just a word about our chair. You know, I think you must have the Pacific Northwest deep in your soul because I read on our website at the county that your parents moved you here when you were two, to the Great Northwest. And that is a couple of years of that good old Northwest blood in your soul. And I know that this decision must come really, really hard for you, a long decision, as you just said, and one that must have taken a great deal of thought. And I got to tell you, you having been council chair, elected by the county as a whole in 2018, wow, that is great service that you have provided. And I think of a phrase when I think of your leadership, and it's leadership without fear. It's something that we aspire to, I think nationally. And you have been someone who has exemplified that quality in Clark County. You've demonstrated leadership without fear. We thank you so much for your service. Well, I need to look at the agenda.
Well, Chair Bowerman?
Whoa.
I know. Welcome to that.
Yes.
Congratulations. And I would like to move to nominate Julie Olson as vice chair, now that that role is vacant.
Is there a second?
I will second it. I appreciate the nomination, Counselor Lentz. Thank you.
Is there a discussion?
I'll just speak to the motion, which is that Counselor Olson has served previously as vice chair and does have a lot of experience on this council. And so as far as being able to fill the role, when and if you aren't able to make it chair, I think that she would, she would serve us well in this capacity.
Madam Chair, I would just like to say thank you, Counselor Lentz. And this is my seventh year on the, excuse me, my seventh year on the council. It too has been a pleasure. And I do believe that I would bring some consistency to the role. And Counselor, Chair Bowerman, if you stepped out, I believe I would be easily stepping in to handle meetings as I have in the past. So, but appreciate the council's consideration. Thank you.
I will just comment that I concur with what you said, Counselor Lentz. But the words that were going to come out of my mouth next were to nominate Counselor Medviji more or less to finish his term because he had been vice chair, served in that role laborly. And so I was going to nominate him. However, we have the motion on the floor. And if there are no further comments, we're ready for a vote. Are there any comments further? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 And those opposed?
Nay.
I believe the nays had it. Were there three voices on that nay? Because some were for sure. Okay, yes, thank you. That's what I thought I heard. Well, I will go forward with my nomination of Counselor Medviji.
I second that.
As vice chair.
I second that motion.
Do you wish to speak to that motion?
Yeah, I would, I would like to speak, Madam Chair. Actually, Gary Medviji did serve as vice chair, very well as vice chair. And I would like to see him back in that position. I thank you, Counselor, excuse me, Chair Bowerman, for the kind words that you gave on my departure. And I know that you will fill this position in very, I'm leaving it in very good hands. And I know that Counselor Medjig, who has been vice chair before, will serve as well. And I know that he's able to do that and willing. So I just would say that we, we need to place him in that position again. Thank you.
Thank you. And are there further comments?
I always feel it on toward to make self-serving comments, so I'll just say it this way. I'm certainly always willing to serve and I will do my utmost. Thank you for the nomination.
Any further comments? Let's take the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
The motion carries. So congratulations, Vice Chair Medviji. And now, let's see, looking at the agenda, you know, one is not prepared for this. But I see that unless there is further new business, which I believe there is not, we will go to counselor reports. And I'd kind of like to go down through the counselors' names individually so that nobody is missed if you, if you have a comment. And let's begin with Counselor Lentz. There must be some things going on in transportation, but go ahead.
Well, we are, our CTRAN board meeting is next week, so I don't yet have another report on CTRAN. And RTC, two other counselors also attended last night, so I can certainly leave an update to them. I'm looking at my notes in my calendar to make sure that I don't miss anything. I was unable to attend the area agency on aging. And I believe Counselor Bowerman, you're the alternate for that. So I don't know if you were able to attend that when I said that I wasn't going to make it last week. I asked them to reach out to you.
I did, and I can tell about that.
Great. That'd be great. Yes, last week, there was an MPAK meeting that I attended, which is another group organized under the Metro Council that includes some North of the River membership to learn about what's going on in Oregon. As with everything, it seems that is touching our conversations with Portland lately. Bridges and tolls were the bulk of the conversation. Nothing new. MPAK isn't a body that takes any votes, really. They're an advisory board. So continued conversation about trying to ensure that especially Metro City of Portland and ODOT have an equitable approach to any tolling that they put forward for their, you know, entire system-wide tolling plan, as well as eventually the interstate bridge replacement when we do get to it. A lot of those conversations have been the same for a number of months of the outlying areas asking for representation and to be equitably included in the conversation and a little back and forth, and the struggle continues. So that's where that is.
And you announced previously that you are the, you were selected as the chair of CTRAN. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So we know we'll be getting excellent reports on CTRAN. Thank you. Counselor Olson?
The only really thing I have to report is the Urban County Policy Board will be reviewing grant applications for both home and community development block grants in our next meeting. And that's usually about a two to three hour meeting where folks come and present their, their grant applications. And then the committee or the board will review them over the next couple of months and make those awards later this spring.
Thank you. Counselor Medviji?
Thank you. So I just want to make a comment about the RTC. And certainly, there were three of us and can add more detail. The one thing that really stood out for me was a public comment. And also, I talked to Matt Ranson ahead of time just because I continuously had conversations with him about how we get a third quarter into the RTC's work plan. And essentially, the outcome of those conversations were that it is in the work plan. There's a paragraph and chapter to place that work into it. But it needed an appropriate sponsor. We never thought that Clark County would be that appropriate sponsor because it is a regional, a by-state, if not a federal concern. But so what came out at the meeting last night, and Matt briefly talked about it, but we also had a constituent comment to it, is there's both a Senate and House bill proposed that would give a fairly substantial budget to the Transportation Agency that would be a responsible and appropriate sponsor. So, and the director of RTC fully agreed with that in our conversation before the RTC meeting. However, we, we really didn't pursue it further when I brought up the fact that, hey, do we, as an RTC, as a board, do we want to support publicly that legislation? So that was kind of just left as a hanging chad, if you will. So I bring it up today because I think we could do that because I think we do support, support it. And we just talked about mine overlays today and how problematic that's becoming with all the growth and encroachment. If we don't start working on a real plan for a third quarter, we will run out of potential for right of ways if we haven't already. So now is the time to do it. And so I'm hoping we can, as a council, lend support to that effort at the, in the House and Senate to move that bill forward. So I just bring that up. And I wanted to follow up from last night because it was about 2:200 or 10:00 PM last night that I mentioned Black History Month. And so I just want to follow up that, you know, who, who do we reach out to? Who's going to draft it? I really think it is a good idea to have a history presentation of a prominent family of color here in Clark County. You know, I had mentioned the Bertha's Place, and that could be it, but it doesn't have to be. But who, who would sponsor and prepare that resolution for us? And who could we reach out to if you agree that, you know, just a brief presentation at one of our council hearings, when we dedicate that resolution, it would be great to hear a local story of a prominent local family.
Chair, may I respond?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Counselor Medviji, I just, I appreciate you bringing it up. And I appreciated you bringing it up last night as well. You know, for the last three, it may have only been two, Black History Month resolutions that we did. It was close coordination with the NAACP. And I was the liaison on that. I would happily share that role. And I think that the more of us who have relationships with our community organizations, the better. But I would recommend that anything be done in consultation with them so that, you know, the organizations that are really representing this in our community can bring their voices forward and have the messaging that they want to have presented. So I'd be happy to, I think you probably already have the, the information for Jasmine Tolbert, the president of the local NAACP. But my recommendation would be that we start there. I think they'd love to, to, to present and to have more conversation with all of us.
That's, I think, a good idea. And Counselor Lentz, if you would please coordinate as you go through that process with Counselor Medviji and recognition of his bringing this forward. I would appreciate that. Anything else, Counselor?
No, for the opportunity.
We now turn to, now this one is hard to say, Counselor Quiring O'Brien. Do you have any report?
Thank you, Chair Bowerman. Actually, I was on the RTC meeting as well. I am thankful that there is legislation presented both in the House and the Senate from our delegation, our Southwest Washington delegation, at least members of that delegation is what I mean. So it should have a fair amount of weight that, as we have seen in our legislative updates, that one of the, the proposed amount to go into the budget for this is $300,000, which I think would be, will be a good amount to start with for planning. So my, my hope is, is that there really can be some planning. And I, and I agree with Counselor Medjig's comments about, you know, the surface mining overlay, the map is really old and more development happens. And then we can't, we're, you know, we're stifled by not being able to, for instance, for a corridor, you know, purchased right away, et cetera, because you displaced people. So I thought that that was good news and that it was actually, you know, mentioned in RTC because I think there's been a little bit of a resistance. And, and I understand that. It's because, because what we're dealing with, the I-5 bridge right now, and they don't want to disrupt that. So that said, that, you know, two other counselors have reported on that thus far. And I, I just want to thank the counselors also for last night's meeting and the way that it was conducted, the orderly manner that it was conducted. And, and I thank all of the citizens that participated for testifying as well. So that's my report.
Thank you so much. You had mentioned earlier about the Council for Aging. There were a number of things that they took care of at the meeting that were fairly routine. But one concern that the group has is the declining number of workers in their field as well, or maybe I should say especially, workers who are available to care for the aging and disabled populations. And one of the benefits of serving on multiple committees as a counselor throughout the community is that one sees like the activity of workforce development and that council relative to various sectors of our economy. So that link has been made between workforce development and the Council for Aging. We'll see where it goes. But it's hopeful that there will be some good linkages made through workforce development with, say, for instance, Clark College and other sites that might offer care workers for them. So that is the counselor reports. We now move to work session requests.
There are no work session requests for your consideration today.
Okay, very good. And Lindsey, do you have a report on policy issues?
I do. Just a couple of things for you this morning. First of all, so a couple of you know, but just so that everybody knows, the Mental Health Sales Tax Advisory Board process will be happening again this year. We took, we suspended the process for 2020 and 2021 due to the pandemic. But we're going to be restarting the process here this year. So that will be incorporated as part of the 2023 budget. so that will be incorporated as part of the 2023 budget. And the other thing I wanted to let you know, the State Broadband Office released their awards for the fall round of the broadband expansion grants. Unfortunately, Clark County did not receive any of the grants. So we, we submitted three grant applications, not Clark County as the government, but applicants within Clark County submitted three applications and were not awarded any of those. But I did receive an email from Comcast looking to continue that work and hoping to partnership or to partner with the county. So I'm going to be following up with Kathleen and you all about that in the future. But bad news, but there will be another round in the spring. And so hopefully, we'll be able to continue moving forward.
Was there any particular reason for Clark County not being recognized for broadband needs?
We don't know the particular reasons. I can say that of the 39 counties in the state, half, or excuse me, more than half, about 28 of the counties put in at least one application. Of those 14 counties received awards. So only about half of the counties that applied even received an award. The counties that received the most were Lewis County and Clowton County, but the awards per county ranged anywhere from $1 million to $24 million. So quite a range in, in that. So we, I can follow up with the applicants to see what feedback they've received from the broadband office as to the specific reasons for those applicants. But those were not publicly released.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, and so Lindsey, I, I really would help, hope that you can get some, gather some intelligence for, for us. So obviously, it was very competitive. But anything we can learn about how we become more competitive or how we can reach out to that office to advocate for our county, I, I would appreciate anything you can gather so that we can change that outcome for the next round.
Any further questions or comments for Lindsey? Okay, and we do not have executive sessions today, do we? That is a change, and dare I say, a pleasant one. If there is nothing further, I'll accept a motion for adjournment. Everyone wants to just say?
I, I saw Kathleen's light come on. I don't know if she had any, she's shaking her head no. So yes, thank you, have a great day. I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second, but, but Chair, I think you have the authority to go ahead and, and adjourn the meeting.
Yeah, I just wanted to hear you one more time. I, what can I say? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.